Today is Monday, June 15th, 2020. The time is 5:30 PM. We can go ahead and call the meeting to order, please. Ms. Garcia, may we have a roll call?
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Wal.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Cortez.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Cortez will be joining us. She said she may be a little late.
All right. Thank you so much. At this time, the first item is adjournment to executive session. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. We are going to go ahead and adjourn to executive session. All right, we are back from executive session. With that, we need a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Make a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Let's go ahead and stand for a pledge of allegiance, followed by the moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We did. We did the moment of silence first. Our next agenda item is our call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be placed on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open poll to the public unless matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. Ms. Garcia, have you received any calls?
I have not.
Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and call or close call to the public. Our next item is item AA. We're going to go ahead and adjourn to the Anthem at Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two. With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion we adjourn to the Anthem Merrill Ranch Community, so the district number two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Our first item is discussion and possible action on resolution number MRCFD 224220. This is a resolution providing for the sale and issuance of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, general obligation refunding bonds, and for the annual levy of a tax for the payment of the bonds. Number two, delegating the authority to the district manager of the district or his designee to determine certain matters and terms with respect to the foregoing, as well as certain matters with respect to certain ones being refunded with the proceeds of the sale of such bonds. Number three, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of necessary agreements, instruments, and documents related to the sale of the issuance of such bonds. Fourth, adopting the post issuance tax compliance procedures in connections with issuance of obligations of the district. Fifth, authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to contributions contemplated by this resolution and ratifying all actions taken to further this resolution. Ms. Jimenez?
Yes. Good afternoon, district board. Just a moment. I have a little bit of a problem here. I'm looking at the screen and I shouldn't be. I just want to let you know about this time last year, we were discussing our bonds and doing potential refunding of bonds that have come up. And our 2010 GEO bonds are ready to be looked at to be refinanced. And as you can see from my agenda item, refunding is basically refinancing. I'm going to turn this over to Mark Reader, but I do want to let you know that the reason that we're doing this is to lower the interest rate. I think, I believe it was at 6.11% of interest. And now we're going to be dropping it down to a much lower rate that I'll let you explain through this PowerPoint presentation that he's going to make, and he'll explain everything to you here. Go ahead, Mark.
Good. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Mark. How are you this evening?
Oh, very good. Thank you. Thank you for having me. I've got the PowerPoint up. Can everybody see it?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, I just got to figure out how to, how to turn the pages here.
Mark, just let me know and I'll flip through them.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Go to, go to page two. Bottom right hand corner, the next page. Thank you. Well, Madam Chairman, members of the board, again, thank you for having me and look forward to spending a few minutes with you on this very important refinancing of general obligation bonds in district number two. Very, very important to the district, to the, to the folks that live there, of course. And on slide two, I wanted to share with you some public policy objectives that you're very familiar with, but I thought I would give you a brief summary. We're talking about district number two. We have an issue back in 2010. The bonds were issued with an average interest rate of 6.11%. Okay, that was back in the, if you remember, the early stages of the development. And if you remember, we were kind of going into a recession back in 2009, 2010. Everybody remembers that. And so at the time we issued those bonds, we issued them at about 6.11%. So we've had our eye on this, and we've been waiting for rates to drop. Interest rates are at very low levels. They have increased in recent weeks, in recent months, as a result of COVID slightly. But high quality, general obligation bonds, bonds repaid from property taxes such as Merrill Ranch CFP Number Two, we always felt would be all in all generally received in the marketplace. I'm going to share with you a wide variety of alternatives that we analyze with staff. We always want to do what's in the best interest of the district, so we had to look at a number of options. On number four, we're going to share with you that we're going to structure the savings of the refunding, which is about $360,000, bear with me. And we're going to structure that savings over the next two to three fiscal years. And we're going to take the savings from the debt service while maintaining the $3.25 tax levy. And we're going to take the additional proceeds and we're going to pay down the $1.1 million, if you remember, the taxable working capital financing we did to replenish the funds that we did back in December of 19th, as you recall. So we issued 1.1 million. The town purchased the bonds. The money was deposited in district number two debt service account so that everything stays fine in that regard. And our goal has always been to repay the $1.1 million over time. And as we generate savings on our refundings and as our assessed value continues to grow, which it has, then we're going to go ahead and be able to accomplish the repayment of the $1.1 million, we are hoping over the next two or three years. Page three, please. Just wanted to share with you an interest rate chart on the right hand side. Again, what I was sharing with you was that it's all in all a very good time to sell these types of bonds. Page four, please. And five, go to five. That's just more additional detail for you. Go to six, please. You've seen this before. This is a, the blue line and the red line is our assessed value. And you can see over on the right hand side, if you go to the numbers down below, we've had double digit, essentially double digit increases in our tax base in district number two. Over this year, we have 13.7% down at the bottom. And next year, the preliminary numbers is we're going to grow about 10%. So we've had a good couple of years out there. This is good news relative to our tax rate and the ability to repay our bonds. Page seven. Wanted to remind, share with council what our tax rate objectives have been in district number two. Down below, we have our 30 cent maintenance and operation levy that we use for MNO purposes. We know you're going through your, your budgets now, your CFP budgets, and I know that you're familiar with that. Up on top in the orange line, our goal is to maintain a secondary tax rate for the repayment of our bonds at $3.25 for a total of $3.55 per $100. And going into next year, budget year 2021, we've been communicating carefully with staff and we will be setting up a tax rate very, very similar as what you see here for 1920. Page eight, please. We always like to bring the board up to speed on the amount of debt outstanding. This is district number two. And these are the general obligation bonds that we've issued over the years. Most of them were issued, as you all know, for the purpose of acquiring public infrastructure from Pulte. And the only one that isn't that is the one on the right, which is our $1.1 million working capital financing I referenced earlier, in the amount of $1.1 million. So as we get closer to the call dates down on the bottom there, we'll continue to monitor this. And as we approach our call dates in the future, we're going to stay on top of this and hopefully refund some of those five and six percent bonds that you see there. So we appreciate your patience on that, but we are staying very vigilant on that front. Okay, page nine. The $1.1 million working capital, we call it, bonds that the town purchased. This is the amortization schedule. And you'll recall this from last December when we met. And you can see in the second column, we have 120,000 come and do here in about two weeks, two to three weeks, July 15th, 2020. We will pay down that principal payment, and then you can see the other principal payments coming due. And as you recall, when we did this transaction, the town has the ability to prepay these bonds further. As your tax collections come in and as we save money from the refunding, our goal is to take that money, as I mentioned earlier, and pay down these bonds. Again, we think we're going to be able to do it in the next two to three fiscal years. So we wanted to give you a quick reminder of the bonds that the town owns and how the town will be repaid back. Okay, page 10. We submitted bids to about 30 financial institutions. We had several call, asked questions, but found out towards the end that a lot of them decided not to bid on it. Nothing personal against Merrill Ranch CFP Number Two, primarily the result of the COVID-19 situation going on in the economy, where we have had certain financial institutions, because of COVID and their view of uncertainty in the world, elected not to submit a bid on our financing. So was I disappointed in that? Yes, we all were. We generally get more bids, but the good news is, if you go down to number three, we did receive a very strong bid from Western Alliance Bank. We got one other bid from First Foundation Bank, who we'd never really done any work with them before. You can see that their rate was almost three quarters of a percent higher. So these were the only two bids we got. You know, again, again, as a result of COVID and, you know, as, as a result of some of the ongoing, I think, litigation that's going on by and between district number one, which we had to, to disclose to the investors. So at the end of the day, Western Alliance provided a very strong bid at 325. By the time we locked it in, the market moved a little bit. We settled at 328, just slightly higher than that. But we were able to come in with the same present value savings on the transaction. I'll share with you in a moment by shaving some of the costs. So again, this was a private placement transaction. It was not a bond issue sold in the public markets. Wanted to share with you the reception that we received and the two bids. And then all in all, I was very, very pleased at the end of the day with the Western Alliance bid. We spent a lot of time with staff going through a number of alternatives. As you know, nothing's easy anymore. And in our attempt to always do what's in the best interest of the district, we look at, we look at a variety of alternatives. I'm not going to walk you through all of this unless you want me to. Madam Chairman, members of the board, I want to take you to scenario one up on top. So essentially by swapping 6.11 interest rate with a 3.28 interest rate, as I mentioned, the district is going to save net cash flow savings on the top there of almost $360,000. So pretty strong. The net present value, as you know, we've worked with you in the past. When we do these refundings, we have to put the $360,000 into today's dollars. And the net present value savings is $355,000. And that is a savings of 14.4%. Generally, cities and towns and CFDs will move forward with a refunding transaction like this when that number exceeds 3%. So that, we're about five times that almost. So that is a good indication that we have a very, all in all, efficient refunding to move forward with. And we wanted to share with you essentially the results of scenario number one. Page 12. Okay, now page 12, lots of numbers on here, but I'm not going to bore you with all of them. Essentially, if you go to column 12, if you see the column that says excess levy on it, that's good news. Okay, we're going to roll about 160,000 in savings this year. Here in the next few weeks, that's going to be extra cash in the fund. Next year, we think we're going to get you about 158,000. I like it. And then you can see 44,000 and 44,000 is the excess levy there. So in the right hand column, column 13, we're tracking the very important $1.1 million taxable bond issue that you hold and you want to be repaid. And you can see that after we make the $120,000 payment forthcoming, and we're going to pay, we're going to take some of that 162,000 there. We're going to be working with staff in the coming weeks. And we're going to go ahead and probably take somewhere between 100 and 160,000, and we're going to repay down the 1.1 million in addition to the 120 you're paying off here shortly. So we're going to be, we're going to be paying it down pretty quickly. And then if you look in column 13, next year, when we go through this exercise, we're hoping that we're going to have at least 160,000 of excess. And we're going to take 160,000, we're going to pay down the 1.1. And if we grow at the rate in column three, and we're assuming you're going to grow at roughly 10%, bear with us. There's a lot of good, good things happening out there despite COVID. But if we grow at 10%, like we did this year, 13% last year, we think we're going to have the entire $1.1 million paid down in fiscal year 21, 22, or maybe at the latest, 22, 23. So we know that's very good news to the board. We know that you were aware of this structure. And so we were able to execute and get the 328 money. And as a result of getting the 328 and paying off the 611 money, this is really kind of the bottom line of a transaction. So with that, Madam Chairwoman, I know that that was a lot. I'll take a pause. And I'm glad to answer any questions of, of the board.
I have a question, Mark. The projected growth of 10%, where does that come from?
If you go back to, I don't, I think Carl's doing this for me, or staff's doing this for me. Go back to call, go to back to page six. Okay, and if you go down, really, there's, it's a pretty busy chart. But if you go down to the bottom, bottom numbers down there where it says net limited assessed property values. You see that?
Yes.
There you go. Thank you whoever did that. So the 984 is the estimated 2021. We don't think that number is going to change between now and the third Monday in August. All good?
Okay.
Last year, it was 13.7. Okay?
Okay.
The year before, it was 57, 68, 526. The year before, it was 843, 19%, 20%. So it's all a function of absorption, residential absorption within Merrill Ranch CFP Number Two. We're hoping commercials going to kick in at some point, a tad bit of commercial in district number two. I think, and so that, that's our historical perspective. Yes.
Number two, we're hoping commercials is going to kick in at some point.
Yes. So I hope that answered your question, Mr. Anderson. You know, we're, we're making an estimate. We know it's not going to be perfect. If we don't grow at the 10%, then we won't have as much of an excess levy to pay down the 1.1.
Okay.
Kind of simple math on that, and we'll evaluate that each year when the numbers come out in February as we approach the budget season.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from council? All right. Thank you for that presentation. There is a motion needed for action. At this time, can I please have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt resolution number MRCFD 2242-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And that motion carries. Item B is to approve and accept written policies and procedures for tax advantaged obligations for Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, with an implementation date of June 15th, 2020. Ms. Jimenez?
Yes. Mike Capiso is on our call tonight, and he has handed down some very well-written policies and procedures in regards to tax advantaged obligations. And without these accurate guidelines, we wouldn't have any basically steering on which way to go and what to do as far as the policies and procedures go. It keeps us out of trouble tax-wise. So with that, I would like for Mike Capiso to say a few words on these policies.
Thank you, Becky. Yeah, Becky said it very well. Basically, there, as you guys are aware from past discussions on this subject, there are certain requirements under the Internal Revenue Code that we have to, and the related regulations that we have to comply with so that we can have the interest on these bonds being exempt from federal income taxation. And that, that's what makes them, that's what makes them sellable at the lower interest rates that you're seeing in the information that Mr. Reader presented. So, so these procedures are put in place just so Becky and Carl have something to check periodically to make sure that we're, that, that the district is doing all the things it needs to do to make sure the, the interest stays tax exempt under federal income tax requirements. Basically, with these kind of bonds being general obligation bonds and being a refunding of prior bonds, there's really not much that, that can, you know, can go wrong. The, the projects that we financed with the bonds that we're refunding were for public infrastructure, public improvements. So there's nothing to really worry about there. The, the payments are all from generally applicable property taxes. So no, no issues under, under those sort of restrictions. And the arbitrage requirements are, are something that staff checks on a regular basis. So, but we put these requirements in place so that the Internal Revenue Service knows that we're, you know, being diligent on the subject. And in the very rare chance that they might come in and audit, we can show them we have procedures in place and that staff, staff is following up on those procedures.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
No.
With that, we need a motion.
I make a motion we accept the written policies and procedures for the tax advantage obligations for CFD Number Two, with the implementation date of June 15th, 2020.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item nine is to adjourn from the Anthem at Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two. With that, we need a motion.
We adjourn.
Mayor, there's an item C.
Oh, I apologize. Before we adjourn, I'm going to pause that and say item C is this question and possible action to approve Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, February 18th, March 16th, and April 15th, 2020, special meeting minutes. May I please have a motion for that item?
Don't move.
And a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And now we have item nine is to adjourn from Anthem at Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two.
Make a motion we adjourn from. For the district number, meeting number two.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item number 10 is our presentations. First item is a proclamation for July 2020 as Parks and Recreation Month in the Town of Florence. And this is to encourage residents to get outdoors and enjoy their communities through parks and recreation. Parks and Recreation Month, whereas Parks and Recreation Program are an integral part of our communities throughout this country, including the Town of Florence, and are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and a region. And whereas the Parks and Recreation Programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas the Parks and Recreation Programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the air quality of the air that we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And the Town of Florence recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation area resources. And whereas the United States House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And now therefore be it resolved by Mayor Tara Walter that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the Town of Florence. Our next item for presentation is a presentation on the Major General Plan Amendment for Grindr Sports. Mr. Larry Harmer? Our next item for presentation is a presentation on the Major General Plan Amendment for Grindr Sports. Mr. Larry Harmer?
Mayor, council, I trust you can hear me?
Yes, sir. We can. How are you?
Okay, good. Good. And I hope everyone's well. I appreciate the opportunity to present this Major General Plan Amendment to the council. If you recall, back on March 16th, the council approved the calendar for year 2020 for submitting of major general plan amendments. By state statute, this can only occur once during a calendar year. I indicated then, and we have since received, a single application. Tonight, it's being given to you as an FYI. The statute requires that we provide a 60-day review period to surrounding communities, agencies, public utilities, things of that nature. That mail-out and notification has already been made. We placed it on your first available agenda, also regarding statute, that we do inform the council and the Planning and zoning commission both that this application has been submitted. The RCA in your packet gives you just kind of a brief outline of what we anticipate the schedule to be for hearings and action. They also, there's a copy of the transmittal that we use to the variety of agencies I mentioned, as well as a copy of the formal application from Grindr Sports Group Incorporated. Guardian Angel Holdings is the property owner. They have granted in writing permission for Grindr Sports to submit this application. One minor clarification I'd like to make is at the conclusion of the RCA, I noted that the council may not be able to take formal action October 5th. Clarification, you could actually take action to approve the Major General Plan Amendment if you so choose at that time. However, it could not go into effect until the annexation is complete for the properties that are included within the Major General Plan Amendment. We are in communication with the applicant. They are pursuing the preparation of an annexation request and application at this time. That generally covers it. If you have any general questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Be aware that as we get comments from outside agency, they will be summated in final staff reports to commission and council.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Harmer?
I have a question about the, you know, we say this is being submitted by Grindr, and the property owner has signed off on it. I guess I would be more comfortable if, if it were combined from Grindr as well as Guardian Angel Holding.
Now, Mr. Vice Mayor, the actual application has both names noted. If you notice, I believe we included a copy of the general application form as the property owner and the applicant both listed. The applicant ultimately signed the application, and then on a separate form, which is not included, we do have the, or no, it is included. There it is. It does have the owner's authorization at the end. So it's a joint application.
What about the annexation? When we get to that, who will be applying for annexation? The landowner?
It has to come from the property owners. Yes.
Okay, good.
Are there any other questions about that? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Harmer, for this presentation. We appreciate it.
And then thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. This is really exciting. This is something that we've been working on and talking about for quite some time now. So it's great to see it brought before us this evening. Our next presentation is a Water Smart presentation for advanced metering infrastructure. Mr. Trenton Shaper.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. As you're aware, we're currently underway with our advanced metering infrastructure project. You've probably seen the PMI vehicles around town replacing our meters. With that project, we partnered with Ferguson Waterworks and Mueller to head that project. We were looking for a way to provide our customers the ability to log in and see their water usage, water usage information, leakage detection, a lot of really good stuff that you get with, with these advanced meter infrastructures that you see in the larger cities. Fortunately, Ferguson and Mueller have partnered with a company by the name of Water Smart. They provide a customer portal for all of our citizens to be able to log in, see their, their hourly water usage, daily water usage, be able to get notifications, a lot of really good stuff in that regard. So I have Lindsey Franzen, who is the Director of the Customer Success Team at Water Smart online with us. And I was going to have her provide a presentation on what smart, what Water Smart is, how it benefits our citizens, and just give you a little bit of, of a peek, a sneak preview of that product and what's to come. So with that, I'll turn that over to Lindsey Franzen, and here you go.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Can people hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you for having me reporting from my basement in Oakland. I'll go in to share a few slides that I put together and then go into our demo site to show you a bit of what is in store for your customers. Please feel free to ask questions at any time, and if we have any technical difficulties, just jump in and I'll, I'll do what I can to fix it. So Water Smart started working with, with the town of Florence several months ago. And we are a software-as-a-service platform. We work exclusively with towns like water utilities and the various agencies that provide water services. And we're an online customer self-service portal that provides water consumption information as Trenton mentioned, and then a number of different tools and features, both for your public and for your staff. We'll be putting all of your accounts into our platform, getting data from your Mueller system, and we're working with Ferguson on this as well. We're kind of a, I guess, three or four-way partnership here. And we'll also be ingesting data from your Casell system. And that's what I've been working with Trenton on, getting all of the data into our system to meet the following goals. With this more accurate data, we'll be able to help you capture, you know, all the revenue that you opt through your water sales, deliver this portal to your customers, have a lot of different tools to really engage with your customers in both directions, sending messages out to them in a timely manner, and also being able to hear from them. And then provide outcomes, you know, both for your, your public, your staff, and then for, for you as the council to monitor. How this all works, it's very data-driven. We're collecting data from a number of sources, directly from those Mueller meters, from your own city systems, as well as from some external, external sources. We use property information from the County Assessor's Office to build kind of models of residential properties so that we can really put people's water use in context. You know, we provide different messaging to small, you know, units with no outdoor space versus a large home with, with a big green lawn, for example. And then we also, through your customers' use of the system, can gather additional information to really give them a personalized experience and also surface that, that data to use. So if customers share information about their property, their household, et cetera, that can be integrated into your own interactions with them. A very kind of high-level explanation of the utility experience. Your staff will have access, city staff will have access to a kind of analytical and reporting suite of features, as well as support and engagement tools. So you'll be able to see all the water use data across, you know, all of your meters, both from an hourly, daily, monthly perspective, with a variety of reports to really deep dive and understand how water is used across your service area, as well as a variety of reports that really enable you to monitor how well the program is working. So it's never a black box. I'm sure Trenton will be reporting, or I will, in future meetings, really kind of, you know, surfacing how people are engaging with a platform, what they think of it, what we can improve, and so on. And then around the support and engagement side, customer service staff can really dig in and understand people's water use to help them, you know, save on their bill, be more efficient, understand billing practices, and so on. And then finally, there's a suite of engagement tools that I mentioned that is just available for, for the town to use as it best suits you. We serve, I think we have about 160 utilities that we work with, and they range in size from smaller than yours to, you know, Los Angeles, for example, with hundreds of thousands of meters. And so these tools are really flexible to let each, each community kind of get out of it what is most important to them. On the customer side, they can log in and see their water use, a variety of tools, 24/7. There are a variety of data-driven notification options that they can sign up for. The most popular is leak alerts. So when potential leaks are detected, you know, with these meters that are being installed, it's a really powerful tool to let people know about, you know, fishy water use right away so they can go and fix problems before they become very expensive or damaging to their property. All right. That's it for my slides, and then I was going to jump into our demo site while I make that transition. Are there any questions just about what Water Smart is and what we're doing here?
Good.
Vice Mayor?
Sam, good.
Lindsey, Lindsey, one of the things that, that you didn't touch on that I think is kind of neat about the, the actual app is you're able to utilize it on the website. You also can have the app on your phone. And, and one of the neat things about the leak detection protocol is not only does it tell you that you likely have a leak, and the way that Mueller reports, there, there are different tiers of leaks how they occur, but as part of the app, it also tells you where to look and what to do to figure out where your lease is, leak is, and how to handle that, which is a whole other level above what, with just telling somebody they might have a leak, which, which is really neat, is the information protocol that's, that's part of it. So our Smart Cities Network built on LoRa is a first-of-its-kind solution in terms of how it's being provided. And the, the system itself, we're doing training right now, is exceptionally powerful. However, if you want to take the system itself and the power that it provides to the next level, you, you end up, and I think I've talked about this before, with artificial intelligence and machine learning. So what, what this particular application brings to the table is that data analysis tool that's beyond the technical information, but applies multiple data sets as part of an analysis to not only identify there's a problem, but what the problem might be and how to solve it, which, which is, is next level thinking in terms of smart cities. So go ahead, Lindsey.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that. That's, we call it like closed-loop reporting, and I'll show you what that looks like in the, the demo part of this. So what I have up right now is, and did it transition? Do you see City Water up at the top of the screen there?
Yeah, we can see it.
Okay, great. So this is our demo site, and this is, you know, a pretty good example of what the portal will look like for you. It'll have your logo and, you know, all of these, many of these elements are configurable in terms of what you really want to highlight to your customers. But essentially, when they first encounter the portal, you know, they'll be asked to make a login, make sure they, they get their, their correct account, and, you know, to keep it secure. And then they'll have a snapshot into a few different types of data. Their billing information, you know, what's, what's my balance? What's my last bill? When is it due? My daily use. We take both the hourly reads and display to people really the dynamic water use over time, but we also take their regular billed use, divided by the number of the days in the billing period, and, and share what we call like gallons per day. Just to give a bit more context, many of our utilities use kind of obscure units. And, you know, CCF, things like that, don't have a lot of meaning to it to most people. So we display use in gallons per day. We have some links, links to help customers navigate both across the portal and into the towns or other sites, if you'd like. Examples of how people are using that right now is, you know, I want to learn more about how my city is handling COVID, and then we can link them easily into the city's website and kind of have that nice interactive navigation. So we, you know, most of what we do is water, but we can, we're kind of a nice platform to let people kind of get into the system and navigate around. We have a field for recommendations on, you know, how to best take care of your water system. We can provide a comparison to really put people's use in context. We can divide residential properties into, we call cohorts, based on occupancy and lot size. And then we can also pull up social media feeds from the utility and put that right in the, the portal as well. We also have what we call a notifications panel, and here you'll see this alert. Our demo account here has had water running for quite a while. We make sure that the demo person always has a leak because that's always exciting. But this, it would be visible to a customer if they logged in. And once we are all, you know, live and running, if the town wishes, we can actually do automatic alerting where they would get an email, or they could sign up for a text or voice alert if we, we detected a leak. There are a couple of different ways we detect leaks. I won't get into the details right now. But it's very configurable by utility, so you can kind of decide what works best for you. Where do you think people need to be notified? A customer who received a leak alert, and this is what the gentleman who spoke earlier referred to, will get a prompt to investigate this unusual use. And if my internet were a little faster, we'd be there. Okay, here we go. It basically opens up this leak detection flow, and this site is optimized for, for all devices. You can go through this on your mobile phone. That's why we have kind of the tiled look on a tablet, desktop, et cetera. And the customer, you know, if they don't know what's going on, they can start checking for leaks, and it takes them through the most likely causes of leaks, the videos, just a lot of advice. I actually did a toilet check with my son the other day. He's thrilled. We found a leak. It was great. And then, you know, if they actually find the leak through this process, they can let you know. And they can even say, let's see, what's my favorite Arizona ones? Right, there's a lot of wildlife blaming. You submit that, and then, you know, your staff, who is within the, the staff side of things, we call the utility dashboard, they'll know, hey, there was a leak. The customer found it. They fixed it. They're happy. We actually get a lot of really positive comments about this. And then they're prompted to register for the portal if they have not already. So we really try to help people solve their problems right away and reduce the, the number of calls that come in to staff people. There's also a set of fields here that are configurable. You know, if there's anything you really want to push out to your customers, you can create additional content to, to be placed on this portal homepage. You'll notice there are a number of these charts that actually provide comparisons. So, you know, it says people don't really have contacts. They get their bill. It's either high or it's low. And they pay it, or they don't even look because they're on auto pay. So this really helps people understand how their use changes over time. Won't take you into every window here. But what I'd like to show you is the track tab where customers can drill down and see the power of all that data coming out of these new meters. And so if they go into the, the track part of their portal, and I apologize, I think the internet's a little slow in the basement. We've got hourly use here. And you can see it's even color-coded. So where we've detected leaks, it's colored orange. Regular use is blue. And they can drill in and see hour by hour. So this is a really handy thing, you know, to understand when you use the most water, what's going on with your, your irrigation system, things like that. Customers can also see their billed consumption, you know, month by month. And then if they do have any leaks that we've detected over time, there's a history there. For those like me who love data and charts, there are a lot here, really just putting use in context, you know, against climate data, against past use, et cetera. You could model their end use to really help them see, you know, am I using most of my water inside or outside, and so on. And then there's a lot of opportunities to manage their accounts. You know, what kinds of notifications do you want to get? Do you want to have other people in your household be able to access this data? You can add users. If you manage multiple accounts, you can add those in here. And so it just gives the, the customer a lot of flexibility to use the portal in the way that works best for them. I think I've probably gone over my allotted time, so I'll, I'll stop there. I will highlight, we have it in English and Spanish. And then just take a pause if, if there are other elements that you want to see or And then just take a pause if there are other elements that you want to see or questions. I'm happy to go over them.
How far back can somebody pull a report?
A customer for their own water use?
Yes.
As much data as we have, we typically, and Trenton, if you recall, we ask for two years of data at a minimum of the billed consumption. The hourly reads, we store as much, we store data from the time we start receiving it. So we'll probably start getting that data feed within the next month, I'd say. And then, you know, we don't delete it from the customer's view.
Yes, correct. Yeah, that's what we discussed. We're currently in the process of getting the data sent over to WaterSmart, working with our CASL data, our billing data, making sure that we've got all our ducks in a row and we're reporting accurately before we go live with the system. Their team has been very responsive. As a matter of fact, Lindsay keeps me on point, following up and making sure that we're trying to get things done as quickly as we can. With COVID-19, things were delayed a little bit, but now we're starting to press forward and getting the data fed over to them. So I agree. I think within the next month, we should have everything going daily to them where they're able to see these reads and start allowing our customers to access the portal.
So Mayor, we have data on our test pilot, which is 49 meters. We have that data that goes back about three months. And then we started installing commercial meters three weeks ago, and they've been doing anywhere between one and six of those a day. But we started residential meter install today. So we believe by the end of this month, we're going to have 300 or so meters in the ground. So we'll have data from those AMR meters, from the test pilot, the commercial install, and then the residential installs, which is going to take a number of months. That's the data that we'll have available.
Thank you. I appreciate all that information.
I just had a quick reminder. Yeah, so with all of the information and data that you're receiving, I know some users have smart homes as it is right now, and they even have leak detection systems that are part of their smart homes. Are they able to integrate any of that data or the ability to get alerts through your app as well if they do have a smart home water detection system?
At this time, we've, we're looking into, I think Bloom is one of them. You know, whether there are opportunities to integrate now with that one. But we're, you know, all of the kind of communication that's available to provide to customers is based on the data that we receive. And right now, that's coming out of CASL and soon from the Mueller meters. And so it would be a matter of lots of integrations that we talk about APIs and whatnot. So it's something that, you know, stay tuned, but at this time, it's not a core part of the platform.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other council members that have question? Or Mr. Billingsley, were you about to say something as well?
No, that was me.
Oh, Vice Mayor.
I was going to say, how do we get her to go see Johnson Utility?
Excellent question.
Was that for me?
Yes, Lindsay, are you familiar with the composure of our water structure in Florence?
I'm sorry, kind of going in and out, but assuming I'm not.
Okay, so some of our water is serviced by the town, the municipality. And then many years ago, back in 2005, 2006, Johnson Utilities services the Anthem area. So Vice Mayor was asking if we could put you in touch with Johnson Utilities, which is now being operated by Epcore, to see if we can get that service as well for our citizens in the north of the Florence Corps.
We're always happy to work with additional water providers.
Okay. So Brent, you can, you know, put that information out as well. But we're very happy that we're progressively taking the steps to move forward and bring in the technology that will help make some good decisions of how water is being used in people's homes.
We'd be glad to give Epcore a demo once we get it up and running.
That's a good idea.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Start small, grow big. All right, any other questions? This was information only, so I want to say thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for having me. I'll stop my share and hand it back over to you.
Our next item is 11, which is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval of an agreement with Pinellas County for the placement of a CERT vehicle with the fire department. Item B is approval to purchase a New Merritt 50 horsepower HP gas engine with a four-speed gearbox concrete saw from Grabber Power Products in an amount not to exceed $32,260.05. Item C is authorization to enter into a letter of agreement with the Florence Unified School District to provide three-inch asphalt overlay on Van Heren Street. Item D is approval to enter into a contract with Cactus Transport doing business as Cactus Asphalt for asphalt overlay on Van Heren Street and a patch on Butte in an amount not to exceed $147,478.04. Item E is approval of the acceptance of the improvement of the period, which shall begin on June 15, 2020, for Anthem at Merrill Ranch units 35A and 37. Item F is authorization to purchase two 2020 Chevy Silverado trucks from Enterprise Fleet Management Trusts in an amount not to exceed $92,211.33. Item G is approval of the May 4th, May 12th, May 18th, and May 26th Town Council Meeting Minutes. Item H is to receive and file the following boards and commission minutes, February 20, 2020, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda. Is there any member of council or public that would like anything removed at this time?
I'd like item B removed.
Okay.
I would like A removed.
Who spoke?
Me. Judy.
Thank you. I apologize. It's, okay. So items A and B. So with that, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda removing items A and B.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda removing items A and B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. We'll go ahead and start with Vice Mayor Anderson in regards to item B.
My question is, it says our amount not to exceed 32,000, but when I looked up the Merritt 50 horsepower concrete saw, it was 28,000. So I don't know what the difference is there.
Chris, I noticed that you're on the line with us this evening. Can you speak on that behalf?
Yes, absolutely. Vice Mayor Anderson, it is just a habit that we, again, continue to put contingency on our items just in case there are any issues that occur. This item has essentially been already costed. We did all of our estimates, but it just so happens that throughout my career, there's been many occasions where something has changed, and then we have to go back to council for anything I think larger than $50. It's a very small amount by our code. So we always just put on contingency, but as you can see on page two, you are correct, 28,052.22, and that's what our purchase will be. And then we'll close out the PO for the remaining amount once it's paid the invoice.
Okay, I would just suggest in the future, you point out that you've included a contingency.
Agreed. All right.
We'll mostly approve item B then.
And a second?
One second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Councilmember Hughes, item A?
Yes, is Dave, he's on the phone, right?
Yes.
Okay. My question to Dave is, is this, I think it's a great idea that we, that they're working with Pinellas Partners, that, Pinellas, sorry, Pinellas County. My question is, what is the dollar amount for, under number four, it says that we'll be responsible for all maintenance? What cost amount does that add to the budget?
So Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Hughes, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. This vehicle is brand new, so it's going to be under warranty for at least three years. So there won't be any, it'll be negligible. There won't be any warranty for the warranty period. There won't be any costs incurred. And then after that, this is not a vehicle that we're going to anticipate racking up a lot of miles on. I would, I could get with David Hills, and we could get an estimate for you, but I can tell you, it's going to be very, very little.
Is it, will it be included? It's not going to be anything additional within your budget that you're asking for because of this. You've got a line item that'll cover it. That's what I think I'm asking, really.
Absolutely. Our maintenance budget covers our entire fleet.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Then I make a motion to accept item A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Hi, item number 12, new business. First item is A. This is resolution number 173920. This is up for discussion, approval, and disapproval of adopting a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, adopting the tentative estimates of the amount required for the public expense for the Town of Florence for fiscal year 2020, 2021, adopting a tentative annual budget, setting forth the receipt expenditures in the amount proposed to be expended for various purposes, giving notice of the time for budget hearing for taxpayers on the adoption of the final budget, and adopting the budget in accordance with the state-imposed expenditure limitation and voter-approved excess amount. Declaring an emergency, Ms. Becky Jimenez.
Yes, Mayor and Council. I'm very happy that I'm almost at the end of this budget. It's been a very exciting year for the budget, but it's also been very different. You all have received the budget in the Budget Committee itself. We started out reviewing, but of course, we had issues with COVID-19, so it kind of limited the amount of time that we could spend reviewing it. But all in all, between the discussions and council input and everything, we developed a budget, and hopefully, it's a lot easier to read this year than it has been in previous years. We tried to make it very easy to understand. We adopt a tentative budget, and we're setting forth the time as July 6 to adopt the final budget. And then we will have a hearing on the tax levy at that same time. It'll be a first reading. The actual levy itself will be done on July 20, along with the CFD levies also. We have entered into a budget this year. The total amount is $47,75,242. This is also, this is a total budget, not including the CFDs. Those are separate budgets, and you will see them come out this Thursday in our local paper as far as advertising the time and place to have the budget discussed and the levy amount and everything. We have to provide notification to the public on these auditorium general budget sheets so that they can see the summaries of the budget. Of course, the detail will be posted on our website probably within two days, and also this document. This is our first year of the permanent base adjustment. So the total amount that can be expended with, for the Town of Florence, is $32,251,744. Our budget has exclusions. When you have a permanent base adjustment, it's the same as the state-imposed limitation. You have different kinds of revenues and expenditures that can be excluded from the total amount of the budget. So this is going to require more work on the part of the Finance Department to monitor these expenditures every month to ensure, or probably every quarter, to ensure that we don't hit that maximum amount. So in this, we will be putting this budget into the paper this week. It'll be published next week along with all the notifications for the hearings. So hopefully, we can end this budget by July 20 and be on our way. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Jimenez?
No.
I do want to just note what a strange budget cycle this has been. And again, communicate to everybody the flexibility that has been built into this budget. Much like what other municipalities are doing, we are planning for our best, our average, and our worst-case situation. And I appreciate that we have, you know, staff members that are continuing to communicate with all of us in regards to where we are and keeping a pulse on that budget that will help guide our decisions moving forward.
I do want to, pardon me. Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Ms. Jimenez.
Oh, I do want to mention that all of the department directors have been wonderful to deal with. They've been very cooperative and very conscious of their budgets. And so I just really want to commend them on all the efforts that they made and all the help that they gave to me this year.
We appreciate that, and thank you, department heads as well. I noticed in looking through and comparing, we have had some areas that we've found cost savings on in a responsible manner, so it's all important. Okay, with that agenda item, we need a motion. So with that.
I'll make a motion. We adopt resolution 1739-20.
That can.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much. Item B is resolution number 174320. This is a discussion approval and disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, declaring as a public record certain documents filed with the town clerk and entitled International Fire Code 2012 Edition with appendices B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I, and addendums and alternates to said technical codes for sections 202 and 903 dated August 20, 2020. Barbara Rice.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much for the opportunity to present these next two agenda items to you. I'm very glad to be able to bring this information to you. As you probably recall, in May of last year, the Town of Florence adopted the 2012 International Model Codes for Construction, the building codes, and included the 2012 International Fire Code. At that time, we had made amendments to the code to address the specific needs and resources of our community. This year, it was discovered that some of the amendments that we made could be modified to meet the growth and development needs of the Town of Florence a little better. And these amendments were regarding some of the sprinkler thresholds we had put into place. Staff met in May to evaluate these amendments and address bringing them in line with other occupancy thresholds we have in the town and to meet the intent of the code and be more consistent. These amendments that I'm going to propose to you tonight are consistent with best practices, other amendments that we have made for all of our occupancies, and they do not reduce life, safety, or property protection or firefighter safety. This First Amendment, or this first item I'm bringing to you tonight, is a resolution to go back and amend the definition of bulk tire storage in the 2012 International Fire Code. It was something that we had inadvertently elected. It was something that we had inadvertently elected out in 2019 when we had made some sprinkler threshold requirements that we'll, we'll discuss in section 903. Basically, the code, the model code before amendment defined bulk tire storage as the storage of tires where the variable, the available area for storage exceeds 20,000 cubic feet. Our amendment had required bulk tire storage of zero square feet to require sprinklers. What we want to do in, with the adoption of this proposed resolution is to amend the definition of bulk tire storage to read storage of tires where the area available for storage exceeds 10,000 cubic feet. This section will then relate to the sprinkler threshold amendment later on in this presentation.
All right.
So given that, a vote of no would mean that, that the town would not adopt this resolution or amend that definition, and a vote of yes would mean that we would amend the definition of bulk tire storage so that we could be consistent with our proposed sprinkler threshold amendment in section 903.
Okay. Council, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have a question. This is the same question I asked before. Section 503 talks about the dimensions of our streets. I just wondered if the town has taken any action to enforce section 503 and 504.
Vice Mayor Anderson, I'm not aware that the town does not enforce. The width dimensions, I believe, are those sections. I'm aware that, that this has been a discussion in the past and have not seen that we do not, that we have not been enforcing those two code sections. We require it when we look at site development and we make sure our street width will accommodate that minimum dimension required in those sections.
Okay, I guess I need to take this offline with you then Barbara, because we are not enforcing that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Billingsley.
I, I wanted to give Barbara the credit that she is due. Everyone on council knows, I'm not sure everyone in the public knows, but when Barbara started with the town of Florence, not only is she the fire marshal, but she's also the Development Services Director, or the Community Services Director, I guess more specifically. And one of the things that Barbara came to me with this spring, after being employed here a fairly short amount of time, was, hey Brent, I'm going through the code amendments and I see some things that we may be able to do with those code amendments to be less restrictive and more, more business friendly, even though I see that you guys have taken the intent of trying to be more business friendly from, from all the various code amendments that you made, which they're quite substantial. And she said, can I come and talk to you about that in a couple of weeks? And I said, what do they pertain to? And she said, fire code. I said, well, I would appreciate if you talked to the fire chief first and then we'll meet. So as she said, in, in May of this year, we had a meeting, fire chief, myself, and Barbara, where she provided the, the presentation that's in the packet regarding the things that, that she thought we could address to, to ease the burden on especially commercial property owners when developing in Florence. So this item is actually a really good news story in terms of Barbara's diligence and, and what, what she wanted to bring forward to council to, to prove once again that, that Florence is, is very business friendly. We're doing everything that we can to, to make our codes as, as business friendly as, as we can while protecting public safety. So I wanted to give Barbara her due for taking this item forward.
All right. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. And she has made a lot of progress in her, her short time here already. Vice Mayor, go ahead and set up a meeting with her. And if you need anything and you want me to join in, let me know. Otherwise, are there any other council?
I'll do that.
Okay. That have questions?
Thank you.
All right. With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number 1743-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item C is ordinance number 69720, which is our first reading of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Arizona, amending section 150 dot 300, technical codes of the town of Florence, code of ordinances by amending the 2012 International Fire Code, adopted by reference under ordinance number 67419. Again, Ms. Barbara Rice.
Thank you, Mayor Water. This, this presentation I want to give now will talk about the various amendments that we would like to bring forth for modification to better meet the growth needs of our town. They will increase the sprinkler threshold for certain occupancy types, which will be more consistent with all of our occupancy sprinkler thresholds and meet the best safe practices for our fire department operations. Some of these amendments I'll propose actually are going to be the model international fire code. These proposed amendments that I will introduce and explain are, are consistent with other jurisdictions throughout the state and again, provide consistency within our community. The, as you know, or may know, the international fire code is updated every three years. So for us to wait until the opportunity to adopt a new code can push these amendments as existing or within our town for several years. And at the time that I was drafting the RCA for this presentation, we had an applicant come in to submit a permit for a approximately 320 square foot storage unit. Under our current amendments for that particular occupancy, which is an S1 storage occupancy, it would be, it would need to have fire sprinklers installed. So that's just one of the changes that I'm going to propose to help our economic development and make things more consistent, more business friendly, and a little more realistic. So just to go through these very quickly, this slide shows the first proposed amendment to the group A2 occupancies. I've listed for you what our current requirement is, which is a sprinkler threshold of 2,500. And we are proposing that we go to 5,000 square feet, which is within the model code. Our current 2,500 square foot threshold would mean a small coffee shop, sandwich shop. One of our businesses like Taco Bell and O Pueblo, if they were built under our current amendments, would be required to be sprinkled. And most of our amendments have a sprinkler threshold of 5,000 square feet, which fire operations experience shows that when we have an engine company using hose lines within that building, a building of 5,000 square feet or less is easier to, to extinguish than a building over that. So the 5,000 square feet meets our needs as well as is inconsistent with most jurisdictions. So I am, we recommend amending that to 5,000 square feet. Do you have any questions on that particular amendment?
Council, do you have any questions?
The only question I have is whether or not this change, if it had been made earlier, might have benefited businesses that have had requirements for sprinklers.
It, it may have. I don't know what particular applications we may have seen prior to my coming in the last year, but I believe, I know some of these changes that we're proposing would benefit applications we actually have pending currently. So there is the potential that these changes may or may not have benefited some of the applicants within these occupancy types that we're going to talk about.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions?
Sorry.
No, I'm good.
Ms. Cortez, did you have one? Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, thank you for that presentation. With that, if there's no further questions or comments, we do need a motion on that item.
Madam Mayor, since this is an ordinance, this is just the first reading, so there wouldn't be any action on this this evening.
You are correct. My current, my current situation with internet glitched, so I couldn't see as I was trying to get back to that agenda item. So thank you. Our next agenda item is item D, which is discussion approval, disapproval for the town manager to negotiate a development agreement with Modus Holdings Incorporated to construct a residential project in the territory square, known as Territory Square Property Development, and to publish a notice of intent to award RFP 05042020. Mr. Brent Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, members of the councils, with, with great pride that I've come before you this evening with respect to this item. As all of you know, and I believe as everyone in Florence knows, the whole intent of developing the North End Plan and subsequently the Territory Square Development Area was to encourage new infill development and economic development near downtown Florence. So we've, we've been engaged in this process for a number of years. The town has spent millions of dollars building infrastructure and taking property out of the floodplain. Council provided a challenge and an opportunity for staff about six months ago to get a request for proposal on the street for a development partner in Heritage Square. We received proposals. We received a excellent proposal from, from Modus, a company from Scottsdale, Arizona, to construct residential housing in Heritage Square and near the downtown with density, which will certainly enhance our, our economic development potential in the downtown. Modus is a very reputable company. Their owner, Ed, is very well known nationwide for zero impact development and is seen as a pioneer in that particular field. His name is Ed Gorman. He's been on multiple, featured on multiple TV shows, including Good Morning America, regarding his work and has had several successful developments. The proposal will become public tomorrow in terms of his successful projects north of us. The ultimate plan is to build on about 30 acres of land that's currently owned by the town of Florence. That would be done through two phases. The first phase of that development, they're looking at about 112 units, that could change because we're early in this process. And that would be on 10 acres that's already out of the floodplain. The second phase of this development would be to add an additional 220 units. The area where that development would occur is currently in the floodplain through a public private partnership with the town would work with the development team to take land out of the floodplain and, and bring public improvements, including utilities and transportation infrastructure, to that site for a successful development. The funds that would be received from the ultimate purchase of that land would then be reinvested in the land, taking more of, of this, this area in the North End Plan out, out of the floodplain. The town has already invested a lot of money in a regional conditional letter of map revision to take land out in phases. Each of those individual phases would result in what's called a letter of map revision or an engineering and construction improvement to remove land out of the floodplain and to, to make that developable. In, in terms of the project, a bid has been provided. That bid is more or less about $43,000 per acre. And the next phases of this process, if, if you allow us to go forward tonight with action, would be to provide a notice of intent to award the, the proposal as, as provided. And secondarily, to allow staff to negotiate a development agreement. That development agreement will be key to the next phase, which would be the actual purchase of the property so that design and construction can occur in the next few months. Are there any questions?
Mr. Billingsley, I just want you to touch upon one very important aspect that you brought in. And you talked about infrastructure and for the past, I don't know, we've been working on it consistently over the years, especially with the Territory Square project. Can you just explain for our citizens why this infrastructure is so important and how we needed to invest and ensure that that was in place prior to moving forward with a project such as this?
Yes. There are several different steps that take place as part of an economic development protocol, if you will, with an individual government. And it all depends upon where that city, town, county is in terms of, of their development and their infrastructure. But very clearly, in, in a project such as this, you're talking about sewer capacity. You're talking about fire flows, both pressure and duration in order to meet modern codes. You're looking at access to transportation, those types of things depending upon development. One of the things that the town of Florence has done, and I'm very appreciative for the support that we've received from the council over the last five years, we've invested millions and millions of dollars in infrastructure, water wells, storage tanks, as, as you're very familiar, water main loops throughout Florence to, to increase fire flows. We actually put in two separate mains, one on each side of Main Street to, to make sure that not only do we have fire flows to the historic areas of town, but that in areas that we knew were going to be focused for new development, such as Territory Square, that water mains and, and sewer lines would be put in place to, to make sure that capacity exists. So there's been a lot of background work and investment that have taken place to allow the town to market individual properties for partnerships. So to that, stage two of that is obviously the ability to offer that infrastructure and those properties for development. And then the third phase of that is how you formulate those partnerships to bring those investments to bear for a successful project. So what you'll see coming forward in subsequent meetings as, as we work towards a development agreement is very similar to what we've done with Circle K, with Sun Life, with the old Florence Hospital, which is Horizon Health and Human Services, and other projects, most recently, retroactively going in and improving infrastructure for our Taco Bell that was, was built about five years ago to make, make sure that that infrastructure is there to meet the codes. What you're going to see occur next is how might the town work cooperatively with a development partner to bring those things to bear in terms of investment in, in a successful project that helps everybody? Did that help, Mayor?
That was perfect. I just feel that it's important that we share that with our community as well, because there's always questions, especially in regards to, you know, how long it's taking to get our project and our vision going in the Territory Square area. And to say, you know, we are working, we are investing in the infrastructure. So I just felt providing that background would be beneficial. So thank you.
A question on, on the same line, because in the agreement, it talks about giving relief from development standards. I'm assuming that's what you're just talking about. You're not talking about building standards.
No, actually, this, this particular property, Vice Mayor, is located in the infill district.
Yes.
So the infill district by its nature, that's, that's where that language came from, is if a project meets certain standards and is located in the infill district, certain things, code requirements, et cetera, can be modified to a certain level. So in this case, what I think they're referring to, because of conversations we've had with them, is if they do decide to go vertical for perhaps a, a two or three. them, is if they do decide to go vertical for perhaps a, a two or three story structure, our Heritage Square zoning district has very specific requirements regarding setbacks, regarding building heights, et cetera. They will have the ability to come back to council if they chose to utilize the infill incentive plan to ask for relief, say, for building height. Not saying that they will, but they would have the ability to come back to council for some relief under, under that individual plan for building height and not have to go through the zoning process through the Board of Adjustment, et cetera, within reason. But there are certain provisions within our development codes where we can provide some relief due to that special designation.
Makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Counsel, do you have any other questions as well? All right. With that, we need-
Mayor, to, to kind of pull back into, to the question that was asked before about fire sprinklers, one of the things that we were able to do for two of the projects that I mentioned earlier, as part of redevelopment and infill, was say, we can have your individual requirements for fire flow reduced if you install sprinklers. So you probably recall that for, for Circle K, for example, they could have lower standard for fire flows if they provided sprinklers inside the building and under the canopy. That would, that would be a good example.
Yes, excellent example. Thank you. All right. If there's no other questions or comments, can I please have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We're all excited.
Make a motion to approve negotiation of a development agreement with Modus Holdings Incorporated to construct a residential project in the Territory Square District known as Territory Square Property Development and to publish a notice of intent to award RFP 05042020.
Second. You have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? That motion carries. All right. Next on our agenda is our manager's report, Mr. Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, I have a couple of items this evening. First, I'll start out with a, a couple of good news items. Number one, as, as part of Jennifer and our police department's hard work, we've been allocated some, some additional funds in terms of Operation Stone Garden. We're going to receive an additional $67,464 in, in this grant. So good work from our folks. I know, Mayor, you've been talking about the success that we've had on the grant side of the house. So there's another example of, of success from the grant's perspective, and certainly $67,000 is nothing to sneeze at. Secondarily, as, as most of you are aware, the Florence Aquatic Center opened this weekend, and it went very well. We had, I believe, 49 people waiting outside the gates on Saturday for the initial open, opening. We are running two shifts, and we were not at capacity over, over the weekend. So a lot of people came out, they properly socially distanced, utilizing the standards from the CDC as, as well as the guidance that was provided by the, the governor's office in terms of reopening an aquatic center. We had 171 folks on Saturday and about 134 folks on, on Sunday. So it's a very positive thing in, in that we can, we can open that resource for, for folks that have been awaiting that and stay safe. The third thing is, is less positive. And I know that council's been keeping a pace on this, and, and we've been providing reports. Last week, we provided three. I try to do one a week, but things have been tough essentially over the last four days. To add some perspective, Arizona has added more COVID-19 cases in the last four days than Oregon has had in, in the last three months. That, that's not great. Mondays are typically the lowest day of the week because labs don't report on Sundays. But we had a record again today in terms of, of Mondays with, with over 1,000 positive cases that, that were confirmed statewide. Our statewide total is, is over 36,000 now at 36,705. And there were 7,200 tests administered just yesterday. One of the things that's been most concerning to, to us from a staff perspective, but also the state health agencies are looking at is nationwide as well as internationally, the positive test ratio has hovered right around 6%. It's been so much higher here in Arizona lately, and that didn't change for today with a positive test rate over 14% in some days last week that were well over 20%. The health experts can't explain why that is the case, but not only are we having higher rates than most every other state in the country, but the positive test rate is astronomical compared to other states. And, and just as recent as today, we were again recognized as one of those states that is what you do not want to be in terms of how COVID has gone forward and, and the rates as they exist. Over the past seven days, we've been increasing by over 1,300 cases a day in the, in the state of Arizona. And if, if you see the, the graphs that are available online, there is not a leveling, there is not a lowering of code cases. There is a skyrocketing of cases in, in the state of Arizona. Cases in Pinal County likewise continually to rot, continue to rise, including a 4.4% increase last night. Pinal County has 1,568 positive cases, and essentially 17% or 268 of those have come from Florence. I hear a lot of people saying that, well, that's just because the cases in prisons. But contrary to that, the cases in the prisons have leveled off. So most of those cases are, are in our population surrounding Florence, not increases in, in cases in, in the prison, prison areas. So I'm, I'm sorry to finish with, with negative information, but it is what it is. One of the things that we get asked a lot on a weekly basis is, well, since we're in phase two, why isn't everything open? If you look at our reopening plan that's published online, it doesn't just say because we're in phase two, all the facilities are going to open. It talks to very specific matrix that, that we're trapping, tracking or made, decision matrix that we're, we're tracking. It, it talks to the governor relaxing executive orders. He hasn't relaxed, relaxed any executive orders in weeks. It talks to lowering or a leveling of, of cases. We're going in the opposite direction. And so I think it's important for the public to know why we're doing the things that we're doing and why that's prudent, prudent at this time. So that, that's all my report, Mayor.
All right. Thank you for that. Okay, our next item on here is our call to the public. Ms. Garcia, is there anybody who called in that would like to speak or have a message for us?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Next, call to the, the council for current events only. Councilmember Kristen Larson.
I don't really have anything tonight, besides the fact that there's been some great things going around in the community, and I'd like to maintain the positivity. So I'm really happy with all the agenda items tonight. I think that we are on a positive path forward and really looking forward to these potential projects moving forward and then seeing how that'll impact our community and, and tourism and all of it. So just really happy for Florence right now.
I don't really have anything other than to say that unless you absolutely have to, I do not recommend that you have a COVID-19 test. I had the displeasure of having one today just for a minor procedure later this week, and it hurts. So hopefully everyone will stay healthy and, and continue to follow the guidelines that we're all observing. Thank you.
Thank you. And good luck on your procedure this week. Councilmember Michelle Cortez.
The only thing I have is to kind of add to what Brent said as far as with numbers increasing. I mean, the debate could go on, on those numbers and the number of tests that were performed versus the number of tests that are being performed now. So that might be why we're actually seeing an increase. But I would like to remind everybody to check on our residents who are retired or who live alone and maybe aren't near their family. This is still just a difficult time for them because their activities have been taken away, and mental health is always something that we need to think about. So if you have a neighbor or you know somebody that you see at the grocery store, if you can find a way to just at least reach out to them and give them somebody to talk to, because a lot of our seniors are just needing somebody to talk to because they're so isolated. Even in Florence Gardens in Caliente, they have not been doing a lot of activities. So there are a lot of residents over there who are just needing somebody to chat with or somebody to visit. And I'm sure the people who are delivering meals are getting an earful for that brief time that they're there. But just, just watch out for your neighbors who you know live by themselves or don't have a lot of family around and just make sure you say hi to them. That's it. Thank you.
Great reminders. Councilmember Judy Hughes.
I just wanted, I just wanted to tell everybody why I was here down at City Hall, because I have a bad connection at the house, and I got bumped off last, last time we were on Zoom. So I asked if I could come down here. But I agree, everybody tries to stay, stay safe, and I liked all the positive things that are going on in Florence. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Anderson.
Well, I would like to thank our town manager. You know, he has had a lot on his plate for the last month. He's kept us well posted on what's going on with CODIS. And I, this thing with MODIS is just unbelievable, and I want to compliment him for all the work he's done to get that going and get it on the agenda and get it started. So thank you, Brent. That's all I have.
Thank you. All right. I just, I wanted to let everybody know, put it on your calendars for next year. Councilmember Larson and I actually attended the Flag Day Ceremony. It was put out on the American Legion Post nine site and thought it would be a great opportunity to attend and see what the ceremony is firsthand. It's something that I had actually never witnessed, but, but I have always been a collector of, you know, torn or tattered flags to give to the organization to properly dispose of. So that was pretty amazing to watch it and be a part of it, and that's something that they do every year with the pool opening. I'm so excited that we have our water slides open and had an opportunity to stop down and see all of our lifeguards and employees this past Saturday. So that was fun inside of the conference room. They all had their masks on, but when they're outside by the pool, Dr. Smith said that they don't need to have the masks on at the pool outside, and, you know, they're appropriately spacing. So everything went smooth. My kiddos had a fun time as well. And it's, it's great to see our plans put into motion. You know, we're continually working to update our policies and procedures, expand and improve upon our infrastructure, and we have a lot of great partners that are looking to come into Florence, and we have a lot of great things that are coming. So I just want to say thank you because this is a lot of work on our staff, our department heads. There's a lot of meetings that go into this, and it's very much appreciated. So we do have an executive session that we'll be closing with after this evening. Vice Mayor, did you want to say something?
No.
Okay, it turned yellow. There was a yellow box around you, so I thought that you had said something. I apologize.
I don't know.
This is a benefit of Zoom. You can actually see when somebody wants to say something because it lights up, but it's also a default if you didn't say anything. So we do have an executive session, and with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn to executive session.
Okay. We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Yeah.
We are adjourned. All right, we are coming back from executive session. We need a motion to adjourn from executive session.
I make a motion, we adjourn from executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Need a motion to adjourn from the regular meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn from the meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We are adjourned.